Here.
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 Gail.
Here.
Kuzakowski.
Can we get those back doors closed? Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item three is the approval of the minutes of November 1st, 2016.
Kavitch will make a motion to approve the minutes of 11:116. Kuzakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Item four is a public hearing on a request to repeal and recreate section 17.0317(c), 17.0317(f) and 17.1402 of the municipal code regarding outdoor commercial facilities as a conditional use in the M1 manufacturing district. City clerk will read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is to consider an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 17.0317(c), 17.0317(f) and 17.1402 of the municipal code regarding outdoor commercial facilities as a conditional use in the M1 manufacturing district. Date of notice is October 13th, 2016.
Doug.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the director of community development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing on a request to amend the municipal code to allow for outdoor commercial recreational facilities as a conditional use in the M1 manufacturing zoning district. Our request was recently submitted to consider allowing an outdoor playground within the M1 zoning district, and currently outdoor recreational facilities are not allowed as permitted or conditional uses in the zoning district. So staff is proposing an amendment to the code which would allow outdoor commercial recreation facilities as conditional uses and to include the following as a definition: Recreation, commercial outdoor, to mean a recreational facility conducted for commercial purposes and outside of a building, including its uses such as, but not limited to, athletic fields, miniature golf, outdoor skateboard park, laser tag field, swimming, bathing, wading, and other therapeutic facilities, tennis, handball, basketball courts, batting cages, and trampoline facilities, not including firing and archery ranges. As well, another section of the code, 170317(f), would include some additional setbacks for these outdoor commercial recreational facilities, essentially creating a setback of not less than 15 feet, or if it's abutting, a residential zoning district could be side rear setbacks of not less than 30 feet. So the plant commission, they have reviewed this request to amend the code to allow these outdoor recreational uses as conditional uses in the M1 zoning district. They have recommended that council approve this text amendment allowing those. So at this point, this being a public hearing, I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendments to the municipal code, to please fill out a comment form, hand that into the city clerk, and once your name is called, proceed to the podium to give your questions and our comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
We'll make three calls for public comment on this item. First call. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item number four. Seeing no one coming forward, we will close the public hearing and move to item five, which is an actual discussion of the consideration of the ordinance number 2829. It would create section 17.0317(c) 40 and 17.0317(f) and amend section 17.1402 of the municipal code to allow for outdoor commercial recreational facilities as conditional uses in the M1 manufacturing district. Open it up to the council for questions and/or comments. Alderman Verhaelen.
This is something that's gonna probably directly affect my district first, and I have three residential properties abutting, a property that's thinking about putting a laser tag facility, outside facility in. I believe they were through plant commission a few months ago, or a month ago. On its face, it seems like it probably would be a good fit in the neighborhood, but my concern is the setbacks, first of all, that abut the residences in particular. For the most part, our industrial areas are maybe surrounded by a few multifamilies on occasion, but most of them are within the industrial parks. There's nothing else that's gonna really be affected by, especially the type of facility that they want to run here, which is outdoor laser tag. And I would like, at the very minimum, something different put in the code with regards to the setbacks from residential homes. Second of all, and this is just a question, and it would probably concern the airport more than anything, because this particular property is right under the flight path for the incoming planes, and I don't know if they'd have a problem with a laser tag or laser things in such close proximity to aircraft that are coming into the airport on a daily basis. That would be the first question, but on the original concern I had, not everyone is aware here, but there are two properties in question on Nicholson Road that are zoning M1, and for me to stand behind this and even consider voting for it, I'd like to see a setback of 250 feet above abutting residential homes, because, you know, there's things in here for structures that could be approved. They have nighttime hours where even if there's a fence around the property, there's a chance that, you know, there could be laser tag things poking at people's windows at all hours of the night and everything else. So I don't think it's fair to the neighbors, especially since there's elderly people living in one or two of the homes there, and it's something I think is just a consideration for the neighbors more than anything.
Doug.
Thank you. Good questions, Alderman Verhaelen. I guess I would just caution the council a little bit from directing your review and consideration of this ordinance toward a specific situation or potential application. You're right that there likely will be an application for conditional use permit for that type of activity at that location, but this is a review of the text which would regulate that for the entire city. And recall that, being a conditional use permit, the council and the plant commission has the ability to institute conditions and restrictions on that particular conditional use, which are specific to that site. So, for example, if the plant commission and council wanted to see a 250-foot setback, even though the code minimum is 30 feet, they could do that, but I think it'd be probably a little bit dangerous to try and apply one property situation across the entire city for the amendment of this text.
So the purposes of this discussion, we're really talking about just the single question of outdoor commercial recreational use in an M1 district.
Correct.
And the specific things that Alderman Verhaelen referred to would be more appropriately brought up at plant commission when we're looking at a specific proposal for a specific site.
Yes.
Other questions?
I still got a comment. Doug's point is well taken, however, I mean, there is mention of setbacks in the paper we got tonight as it relates to residential homes, and I thought we could just amend that part of the code. The code changed to, instead of 30 feet, say 250, where it abuts residential areas. And now it would be a citywide thing. Any place that comes up against residential homes would have to have a 250-foot setback, because I'm sure that there's other ones, there're probably few and far between, but then it would cover it citywide, and it's in the code.
What's the magic with 250 feet?
I just think it's 50 feet from here to the glass wall here, and I don't think that's really fair to anybody that has a residential home where there's gonna be, you know, teenage kids and stuff running around in back of your house till 10 o'clock every night on Saturdays, every week, with laser tag things. You know, like I said, it just leaves it open to, you know, something that the neighbors are not gonna appreciate, I'm sure, you know? And I thought, you know, 250 feet, you know, that's probably closer to the other side of the wall and the other side of the meeting room on the other side here. And at least it provides a long enough buffer where, you know, there's not gonna be any noise considerations that are gonna bother anybody, and for sure, I mean, you might get a stray laser thing pointing at the house here and there, but it's not gonna be something that's right next to your house.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
The city attorney is the... When it comes to the noise ordinance, they talk about 50 feet being the measure of noise from a business to where there might be a problem. Is that correct, 50 feet? Is that generally what the R ordinance says, if you recall?
It's a couple of different subsections, but one that we've discussed in the past is a specific carve-out for a specific situation.
Generally 50 feet? Considering the potential use of some of these properties, I would suggest that the setback just go to 50 feet. That would be consistent with any potential noise issues that businesses may have with neighboring residential properties. I mean, 30 feet, you still have 20 feet of wiggle room, shall we say, and 250 feet seems like quite narrow the size of the potential development, so I would go with 50 feet, if that's of any value.
Alderman Kavitch.
Just to kind of bring you up to speed, because planning kind of went round and round with this, and Doug really described it very well. This was a citywide issue we're looking at, although Alderman Verhaelen's correct, a property did really drive this going forward. That particular property is the one referenced near the residence. I think Doug hit it right on the head. Planning really felt strongly that we should get it in conditions and restrictions, depending on what that particular facility's gonna be. So if it was a rock climbing facility, we talked long and hard about how high that rock climbing tower would be in reference to the neighbors. If it was gonna be, just say, for instance, a go-kart track, well, maybe 50 feet net noise isn't gonna work at 50 feet abutting residents. So nobody had a crystal ball as to what it was gonna be, but we all did agree that some of these M1 properties are being repurposed into recreational facilities, whether it's miniature golf or batting cages, things like that. We talked about the height of a batting cage for quite a while. So we did kick it around. We felt this was general enough to go forward citywide and that we could address it with conditions and restrictions going forward. So that's how we came up with this particular thing. Again, one property kind of drove it, but we had to look at the whole thing, the whole as a city, so again, please keep an open mind as to how we repurpose some of these M1 properties going forward in our industrial parks. This is going on consistently throughout the area, and this won't be the first nor the last business we see looking to do something with a building or a property like this.
Anything on this side? Alderman Gill.
I would just echo Dan's sentiments there, that I think this, we should just look at sort of an all-encompassing kind of general philosophy and let the planning commission do its work, and common council will get a final take at this anyway, so I think from that standpoint, it's a good framework, and we'll trust our committee people to do their job and we'll go from there.
Anybody else? Motion on five.
Kavitch will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2829, creating section 17.0317(c) 40 and 17.0317(f) 5, and amending section 17.1402 of the municipal code to allow for outdoor commercial recreation facilities as a conditional use in the M1 manufacturing district. Kuzakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Under old business, item six is informational tech, information technology agenda item. It's resolution consideration number 11755-110116. It would approve an intergovernmental agreement for reciprocal fiber optic cable and duct between the city of South Milwaukee and the city of Oak Creek, held on November 1st, 2016, and it should be noted for the record that South Milwaukee approved an identical resolution, from my understanding, on that same evening in South Milwaukee, and we held it here. Caesar's here to answer any questions or give us a little background.
Okay, first, before I start, we do have the city clerk from South Milwaukee here. Probably most of you recognize him in the audience.
Welcome.
So he is here. Basically what we did, I sent around, or included in your packet, was informational sheet, because I understand that last council meeting, you guys were just too quick for me, I couldn't get back here fast enough, but there were some questions about fiber and how we were interconnecting potentially with cities and other municipalities and things, so I included a little history there that explains every initiative or everything that's been discussed in the past, starting back in 2005 and on. So if anybody has any questions about interconnecting municipalities or what that means or involves, I'd be happy to answer them. This agreement basically interconnects, provides fiber from the city of South Milwaukee to the city hall here, and then we're routing it down to the police department. What we gain out of this is, we gained, the South Milwaukee paid for the design of this project, they paid for the installation of this project, we provided leftover fiber that we had from our existing project that was on a spool stacked in our street garage that was extra fiber. What we're gaining out of this is, with the fiber that South Milwaukee put in, we now have a way to reach the east side of our city, because the fiber goes from city hall here north to Drexel, east on Drexel to Pennsylvania, and then roughly three blocks north before it cuts into South Milwaukee. So, for example, if we want to put security cameras or any kind of internet access or computers at Alenshine Park, which several years ago they wanted to put cameras at the skate park, we now have the ability to do that. We also have the ability in the future to extend it potentially south to either the water treatment plant or to our fire station going that direction. So the benefit to us, while we're not immediately using this fiber in the future, I am sure that we will be. Fiber has a life of, well, at this point, it hasn't deteriorated anywhere as it's been put in. They started putting fiber in in the early 50s, and fiber is glass, so if you look at your glass window panes, there's 100 old glass window panes that are still being used. So fiber has a life that will last definitely more than 20 years, and at this point, all I can say is, it's a win-win situation for both cities. They get access to connect to DOT and to several other cities. We get a way to, without spending any money, really get a way to get fiber and access out to our parks.
Well said.
Or intersections, whatever else down the road we might want.
Well said. Questions?
Yes. These are, at the last meeting, it was, there was some question as to the fiber optic work that was done on Drexel Avenue. Some folks didn't know who approved it, how it got approved, when it got approved. I found out about it from complaints from a resident due to the landscaping work. How did that all of a sudden happen? Did people not get told about it that should have, or?
What's happened, and I've sent a couple of reports to you guys, but that was basically after the fact. The city was aware of it. City administrator, I give reports to the city administrator, and at that point, I made the assumption he was putting it in his reports to you guys, which I did put a note at the bottom of my sheet there that I did not have access to his report, so I don't see what, I know he used to give you weekly and monthly reports. It has been a situation where people in city hall have been aware of it. They did pull building permits for it, and they paid 200 and some dollars, 90 some dollars for the building permits. It's not that it's been a surprise. Unfortunately, you guys might not have been notified in writing if the city administrator didn't tell you about it.
I'm not sure that it didn't show up in one of his reports, I'd have to go back and look, but obviously communication on that kind of an issue probably could be better.
Right, and that's why I wrote the history report there of everything I've done since 2005, and it lists not only South Milwaukee, but there's been a couple of other ticklers out there as far as interconnecting cities. So I thought I'm gonna put that out there so you guys are aware of everything that I've done.
Just wanted to put that question to rest. Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Gill, and then Alderman Kavitch.
Yes. Caesar, in your initial section of witness statements, you say, "Whereas South Milwaukee and Oak Creek anticipate being requested by other entities to use a portion of the fiber optic transmission system for purposes of data transmission." What do you anticipate being the nature of this request, and how do you expect to treat them? People show up and ask, "We grant them," or what's the nature of that?
As far as, you're talking about the third whereas there? Data transmission between South Milwaukee and the city of Oak Creek?
It is the last whereas, actually, right before, no, therefore, right above that.
Oh. Okay, at this point, we do not have any other entities that would like to piggyback on our fiber line. However, I would anticipate that there may be entities like the South Milwaukee School District that would want to connect up to the other school districts, for example. Or, one other option that we have available to us, which would be available to South Milwaukee as well, is WISNET, which is a state agency that provides internet access to, well, it's not a state agency, it's a government, it's an entity that provides internet access to government entities at a reasonable price, for example, libraries, cities, school districts, things like that. It's a lot cheaper than we can get now, but we have to get connected to DOT in order to get it. So I'm assuming that South Milwaukee School District, South Milwaukee Library, South Milwaukee City Hall may at some point want to use WISNET over one of the fiber lines to get fast internet to their facilities. Or the school district might want to, South Milwaukee School District may want to connect up to the Oak Creek School District for some reason, or to a different school district in the suburban area here, and it gives them the ability to do that. So we're not sure what entities, we're looking at government entities, we're not looking at private entities for this.
I mean, just if you anticipate these things, make sure, I mean, school districts have separate government entities.
Correct.
So we have to make sure that it makes economic sense for us to do that.
That's correct.
We paid to put our fiber loop in.
That's right.
So you need to make sure if we're gonna maintain those things, we make sure that it's mutually beneficial.
Right, I guess one of the reasons I bring that up also, I did in my history write out that we want to connect to the Wisconsin DOT fiber, and that gives us opportunities to connect with other entities as well, government entities. They are not gonna charge us for that, they're expecting, you know, down the road, something in return, a favor, you know, when it comes around some of these things, it's just governmental cooperation, so.
Just make sure we're getting them in return.
Yes.
Just in your background, you said that the information was provided at the common council meeting on September 8th. Looking at the actual record, it's September 2nd, but you discussed the fiber optic arrangement, and did you mention South Milwaukee in that conversation? Do you remember?
Um...
Because that was part of that whole package.
September 8th of 14, are you looking at, or?
It's actually September 2nd of 2014. We just pulled it up, just because I...
Oh, is it the wrong date?
Yeah. September 8th is a...
It could be the 2nd.
Okay, so at that time, do you remember if you relayed that information then to the council?
No, because at that time, I was not aware that South Milwaukee was going to come to us.
Just wanted to be clear on that. All right, thank you.
Correct.
Alderman Kavitch.
Again, you know, Caesar, I do think this is a good idea, I think it's beneficial to both communities. The spur under my saddle was, we never heard about it. And again, this may not have fallen on you, this may have fell on Jerry Peterson, but it had to fall on somebody, because a lot of us were in the dark about this. And I hope to God that Caledonia right now ain't tunneling through our city to get up to the airport or something, without our permission. So what would have happened to Port South Milwaukee if this council would have flipped over and voted no on it, and they would have wasted all their money? So simple communications would have sorted this out, and again, with no financial liability, I'm almost amazed it didn't come before us and say, "Hey, by the way, we're doing great things for no cost." So again, I'm for it, it's just really troublesome when you find this out. In most cases, when you see that roadwork going on, you think it's the state or somebody that just can kind of do that kind of thing, or the DOT. But again, I don't recall any reports coming out from the city administrator on this at all, because I think we all would have been high-fiving each other for this idea, so. But anyways, that's my two cents for what it's worth.
Okay, and that's why I did create that sheet for you guys, so that it...
Yeah, you're clear.
All the other items, I tried to cover, just, one of the goals of the IT managers in the county here has been to interconnect the cities, because we can share data sources, share connections, things like that, and I gave you one example where our police department, we connect to the city of Greenfield, and we've saved about $80,000 already by doing that, and that was, it started in 2005, '06 actually. So there are ways to save money by doing this.
Right, and I think it will be mutually beneficial, it's just everybody knows about it, rainbows and butterflies from there on out, especially for no cost.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Caesar, I know we've talked about this in the past, about closing the loop. Is there any plan of going over to the water utility and the other fire department?
Right now, there is not. We've looked at that, and the cost on that, well, last year when I looked at it, the cost was $250,000 to do that, and I just could not cost justify spending that much money to get those two facilities online that way. There's more cost-effective ways to do that, actually.
Other questions? Motion on six.
Yeah, I got a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I've been pushing my button, I don't know if it don't register by here or not.
Now it's there.
No, just echoing Alderman Kavitch's concerns, not to put any blame on Caesar, because I know it's not his fault, but kind of a sad day when elected officials are the last people to find out about stuff like this. It's not good.
Okay, anything else? Motion on six.
He'll move to approve resolution 11755-110116, approving an intergovernmental agreement for reciprocal fiber optic cable and duct between the city of South Milwaukee and the city of Oak Creek.
Kuzakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Item seven is a consideration of resolution number 11756-110116. It approves an intergovernmental agreement for information technology services between the city of South Milwaukee and the city of Oak Creek. This item was also held on November 1st, 2016. Caesar.
Basically what this is, is the city of South Milwaukee has been using a consultant to do their IT services. They use almost exactly the same software programs that we do, their hardware is similar, it's not identical, but it is similar. Since we're interconnecting with them with the fiber, it's in effect another location just like one of our buildings. We operate out of city hall here, and we run to the fire stations, for example, or the police department as needed, if you need a physical presence there, but most of our work, or a lot of our work, is done just by sitting here and remoting into equipment on the other ends. We thought it would be mutually beneficial, mostly, to do something, we've helped out South Milwaukee in the past when they've had an issue, an emergency, things like that, when they've had an issue, we've helped them out in the past, and so we thought, this is an easy way to promote government cooperation. They're gonna pay us for the time that we spend there. I did look at our pay for everyone in our department, and the money that we're gonna be charging them covers any one of the people in our department, including all the fringe benefits. This is normal work hour type activities, it'll be normally eight to five, it's 20 hours a month, not any more than 20 hours. Now that we're fully staffed here, 20 hours a month isn't gonna really hurt us at this point, we're catching up on our projects, generates a little additional revenue for the city, but it gives us an option, if we use that revenue, we can hire a specialist, call it a consultant, that'll work on projects for us that are specialized and that we are not necessarily trained in. So it gives the city the ability to get resources, specialized resources, and it gives South Milwaukee the ability to have consistent people working on their systems, instead of, every time a consultant comes in, it's usually somebody different from the same firm, and then they have to relearn everything again.
Okay, questions? Alderman Kuzakowski.
Caesar, I don't intend to be argumentative or sound that way, I had a tooth taken out yesterday.
yesterday, so I'm just kind of feeling a little grumpy. The, I took this proposal, and I'm, I'm open-minded on this, okay, so we set that straight. I took this whole proposal to a number of people for their thoughts. And their, and, you know, citizens, residents of the city, and their thoughts, after reading it in its entirety, their thoughts were, well, if, is this an outside job, or is this a merging of city services? And the way I read it, this is, kind of falls under the category of Oak Creek IT taking on an outside job. That's the way I read it. And that's the way everybody, majority of the folks that we talked to, took this. So their opinions were following that was, well, if they have enough time to do this, either they're, you got too many people in the IT department, or they don't have enough work, if they're looking for work to do during normal work hours. That was their opinions. And secondly, the money that you're going to generate, because there's, and the paperwork already says you have money in your budget for a specialty consultant, this would just be adding on. The opinion was, and I agree, the money should go to the city's general fund if this is an outside gig that you guys are doing. Now, it was split 50/50 as to whether or not this should be done after normal work hours or during normal work hours, because of how this was presented. You know, if you were saying, if you were merging departments, it would be presented a little different than an intergovernmental agreement. Okay? So that's, that's the feedback I got, and I, I, I'm open with the idea of, like, well, okay, you're going to do this during normal work hours, I mean, are you, yeah, and you just said that you're caught up, I mean, now you're looking for, for other work to do, you got, you see where some folks could go with that. Well, if they're looking for work, maybe there's too many people there. And I understand you can't predict IT problems, they just pop up all of a sudden. And then the other thing was, the money should, since it's already budgeted for specialty consultants, and like, gee, they want to take on a job to make money, to hire consultants. Okay. Their opinion is, the money should go to the general fund, and so I offer you the opportunity to, to talk about that.
In our consulting budget, the line item for consulting for city of Oak Creek consulting, we are proposing, I believe it's $10,000. And that covers some Brokert and Milky, and a few other smaller consulting items. Normally, every year, prior to last year, we used to have $5,000. And we didn't use consultants prior to that. I do not like using consultants. The reason I don't is, again, because by the time you teach them what they have to do, you might as well do it yourself. Unless you can get somebody knowledgeable that's going to be consistent and come back. As far as our IT department, it's, this is not moonlighting, so it's not our guys going out and actually getting the money themselves. It's, it's a project where, yes, we're helping the city of South Milwaukee out, who does not have an IT department, but the other benefits that we could potentially get from this is down the road, for example, we both use GCS software, our attack software. There isn't any reason that, instead of them having a server, and a server for their GCS software, and a server for their SQL software that drives the database for GCS, that we can't use one server, well, it would be two servers, a GCS server and a SQL server, and both cities are housed on the same server. And then we would get additional cost-sharing measures, or saving measures, because of that. If we were to co-host, for example, some of their software, or vice versa, they're going to be doing backups, potentially, at our site here, we could do backups at their site there. So there are other features. As far as our workload goes, I have a set of guys that are doing really well right now, they're all young guys, I'm an old man at this point, you know, and they're half my age, but they're doing very well, we are starting to catch up on our backlog. And we're starting to do some of the things, if you ask around some of the departments here, they'll tell you that we're starting to do some of the things that they've been waiting for, that have been on their list, that they need to have done. For example, we're doing a work order system for the support staff in City Hall here, that we're creating. It's not that we are looking for extra work, but this is an opportunity for South Milwaukee to benefit, it's also an opportunity for us to get, like I said, we've been using Mike Williams as consultant, I think you've all met Mike Williams around here. He's a, he's a very versatile guy, and he thinks outside the box. And, for example, this is a way for us potentially to get a little bit of consulting time out of him next year, to work on one or two special projects for us that we aren't skilled in. He just finished the alarm system for City Hall not long ago, none of us have done that type of work. He's done that for other cities, so. It, it gives us a chance to do something, some additional work, that if I had to hire a consultant for, would cost us more, if I could find the right person.
And at the end of the budget year, if you have this, this extra $19,000, let's say, I mean, you've got your one line item for consulting, and then you have another line item, let's say, for income from South Milwaukee, and if that, at the end of the budget year, that money is not used?
It was, it would be in the general fund.
And will your employees that might be working on a South Milwaukee project, if something comes up in, with Oak Creek, are they going to, who are they going to give the priority to? Are they going to prioritize Oak Creek and, you know, have to stop with the South Milwaukee stuff, or are they going to say, hey, I can't, can't help you there, I got to deal with the South Milwaukee stuff? I mean, how?
Our goal-
Because, this is the way all this was presented, you know, it's, it's not a merging of departments, like I said, I mean, you guys are helping them, so.
Right, they don't have a department to merge with, and they don't have resources.
Okay, I understand that, I understand, yeah.
So, our city is going to come first. However, if, for some reason, there was an emergency there, I would treat that the same as an emergency here.
Well, emergency's notwithstanding, I understand that.
Right, standard scheduling, if somebody has an issue, here we schedule, if somebody has an issue with a computer, we schedule it based upon need, and I would do the same there. And we're not going to neglect the city of Oak Creek in order to get their work done.
I'm set, thank you.
Anything on this side? Alderman Gail?
If everyone's ready to move on from Steve's conversation, I had one just from Melissa that I wanted to confirm with her, the liability.
Alderman Gail inquired about the liability and indemnification in Article 6, and I did have a conversation with CivMIC in terms of the cap that we have here. In terms of it, this was part of a discussion with South Milwaukee City Attorney, in terms of their review of the agreement. So, given the fact that these are two municipalities that share the same insured, there certainly is some benefit in that from CivMIC's perspective, and also there is, I believe it's called cyber liability insurance, there's an additional coverage piece. So, to that extent, this Article 6 has been discussed, and the limit, the cap, so to speak, with CivMIC, so they are comfortable with.
Alderman Verhalen.
This, this is something that I looked over quite a bit the last couple days, and, you know, the, when you look at the scope of services here, there's a lot of stuff that South Milwaukee's expecting out of Oak Creek for, if it's true, for five hours a week. And I don't believe there's any way possible that our department, or any other department, can provide all of the service that are, services that are listed on this two-page background sheet that we have for five hours a week. And, and there is a clause in, in Article 4, under compensation, where it does say, you know, if the costs of services provided by Oak Creek are anticipated to exceed $7,000 in any, any given quarter, well, that sticks out to me, that it automatically already says that we can't do this work for, you know, $19,000 a year, because otherwise, this clause wouldn't be in there. You know, and I, I kind of think in the back of my head that, you know, once we get into this thing, you know, down the road a year or so, there's going to be extra staff that's going to be required, there's going to be extra time that's going to be required, it says right in Article 4, that we're required to service this stuff 24 hours a day, you know. I look at it as, you know, Oak Creek is, is here to serve our citizens first, and, you know, we're not in the business of farming our services out, or being in the for-profit business, it's just not the way city government was formed, I wouldn't think. I have nothing, nothing against, you know, sharing services or whatnot, but, you know, this could turn out to be something that's way more involved and way more intense that, that anybody sitting here is even anticipating right now, and I, I just can't, I can't support this in any way, shape, or form, the way it's, the way it's spelled out here.
Bridgette.
I'm still-
You've indicated you don't support it, make your point.
I don't support it, and I gave some good, good reasons why.
And I let you make them.
Because it, it says right here, you know, that, that-
We understand what it says.
The thing is $7,000 in any quarter. But I want to make sure that we don't sign a three-year agreement, where all of a sudden we're seeing not $19,000 a year, but 40, or 50, or $60,000 a year, or $70,000 a year, and all of a sudden, somebody's here asking for more employees. That's what I'm trying to figure out. And I don't want to see that happen. So, I'd rather see us take a six-month, you know, more or less a trial period with this thing, and then come back with a long-term contract if it seems to work out. So, indeed, if we can do the work for five hours a week, then I guess probably would be a good deal. But I don't want to sign a three-year, three-year agreement, and have Caesar sitting here in a year and a half asking for more people. If he can document that he can do this kind of work in, in five hours a week for six or eight months, then I might consider buying into it. Other than that, no.
Bridgette.
I just wanted to clarify, in terms of the 2017 budget, this revenue and this expense, or potential expense, is not in Caesar's budget, nor in our general fund revenue. We, based on the timing of these contracts, I was not going to utilize expenditure restraint dollars on something that we didn't know if it would come to fruition, besides the fact that in the last paragraph on Caesar's council report, it says the IT department could hire. Not that it would, not that it would spend every dollar of the revenue that came in, but that that could be an option. So, as it stands, if this agreement is put through, it will be additional miscellaneous revenue for 2017 into the general fund. The revenues don't go into Caesar's budget, Caesar's budget is a part of the general fund. So it goes to the greater picture. On a positive note with all of this, all departments across the city were tasked over the past six months with being creative, finding additional revenue sources and additional ways that we can work cooperatively with other communities. And so this is a good example of that, from my humble opinion, in bringing some additional dollars into the city's general fund budget.
Caesar?
So, one other thing I can say to address that is, South Milwaukee currently pays a consultant for 16 hours a month, and they have for several years now. So they are used to 16 hours a month. We bumped it up to 20, looking after, after we looked at their system a little bit, South Milwaukee felt that they could go 20, we bumped it up to that, that's what we're anticipating. Some of the work that they do, they do in-house, we're not going to be doing all of their computer work. They're going to use us for-
Wait, wait, it looks on this agreement if we sign it.
In your professional opinion, how many years have you been working in IT?
Well, over 20.
Okay. This agreement provides South Milwaukee with a service they don't have, because they don't have their own department.
Correct.
Your staff can provide the 20 hours of service, that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
In your professional opinion, you don't think that that's going to, it's going to exceed that, because they currently don't demonstrate that, that they exceed that?
They currently do not exceed that with their consultants, so we are anticipating providing a better service to them than their consultant, because we're familiar with the product, but I'm not, we're not signed up for more than 20 hours a month.
Right, so we're not going to be committing extra hours-
Correct.
-to their, to their city.
Correct.
And just to the general idea of how, why we should help other cities, because there's going to be a time, and there has been times, when we've asked other cities to help us, like the city of Franklin. So to say you want to be Oak Creek and Oak Creek only, and stand in a silo, and nobody tells us how to do anything, and we don't want to change or help other cities, is, I would say naive, and probably not the way I would do business. Ultimately, the council will decide this issue, but this is a contract, but South Milwaukee provide 20 hours of IT help, under an arrangement that I think has been vetted by two cities that need the help.
And, for example, South Milwaukee extended an offer to provide us with a city sanitarian on a part-time basis earlier this year, to help us out.
We use the services of their, their health director currently, so there's lots of areas where cities have crossovers, so. To stamp your feet, or to say, I don't want to participate in, in shared services, I think is not very forward-thinking. Other questions from the council? Alderman Kukic?
Just a point, Caesar built in here that Oak Creek reserves the right to increase the rate by 3% per calendar year, if needed.
That is correct.
So, I mean, that's built in, again, it's stated in here that they're doing it in 16 hours, they need 20, there's rider in there for additional hours of pay. And then, this really isn't a three-year, because we're at the end of 16, this expires the end of 18, we're really only doing this for a two-year trial. So, I'm okay with it. I'll give it a shot, I agree with some of the stuff the mayor said. We have to do shared stuff going forward. And, again, one point in time, we may need it, and we have needed them, so. I'm not saying we owe it to them, but I think it is the right thing to do, and I think it benefits both communities, so, it's a win-win.
Quickly to Alderman Kukowski, then Alderman Guzikowski.
I, I just want to say thank you for the answers, somewhat spirited discussion, and it answers my questions, and I'm satisfied, thank you.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Just one thing, I think the 20-hour cap is, is what kind of sold me on this. We have to remember that with, with the systems that you have in place, you know, all this stuff is being done remotely, so it's not like you have to go work on an engine, or you have to go work on this or that, it's all remote, 20 hours a week, it's a win-win really for South Milwaukee, and, and we have some services that we can provide them, so I think this is a good, good get for us at this point.
I, I will say, though, we're going to attempt to do as much as possible remotely, but we will at times be there, you have to work on switches and things-
I get that.
...in person. So it's not totally remote.
Motion on seven.
Gail, move to approve resolution 11756-110116, approving an intergovernmental agreement for the information technology services between the city of South Milwaukee and the city of Oak Creek.
Guzikowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kukic.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Toman.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business, item made is a motion to authorize staff to take preliminary steps to create tax increment financing district number 13 for the Lake Vista neighborhood in the fourth district. Hug?
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff is requesting the common council to formally authorize us to take steps to form tax incremental district number 13. The district, as currently proposed, would contain approximately 554 acres, including most of the lakefront east of Fifth Avenue, between Bender Park and the MMSD water reclamation Just as, as a bit of background, and the council, in, in some fashion, did discuss this possibility when they were discussing the bids for the Lake Vista Park project, and, and actually had some discussion regarding doing an amendment to TID 6 to set it up as a donor TID, a possible donor TID for this newly formed fifth district. So, this is kind of proceeding down the path that the council has directed us to go in with the Lake Vista project. We recall that a lot of the planning and soft costs, environmental, legal, that have already been- that have already been expended, uh, along the lakefront would be eligible project costs for this, as would, uh, project costs associated with additional infrastructure to service the three development sites that are in the vicinity of the Lake Vista Park. Uh, if the approval was granted to proceed, we would take the steps necessary to contact and convene the standing joint review board, create a project plan, the council will be kept apprised of the progress of this district, uh, staff, which includes our financial and legal consulting team, works on agreements to implement that project plan. Uh, just as a fiscal note, that the cost incurred in the planning of the TIF district are eligible to reimburse, again, that's, I believe that's about a 1.5 million, 1.8 million, okay, a little bit more. Um, the additional investment made possible within this district, obviously, as with any TIF, would go to pay off the project costs and at such time as closure, would then accrue to all of the taxing jurisdictions. Happy to answer any questions. This is the first step in the process, which ultimately includes a public hearing in front of the common coun, in front of the planning commission, a, an approval by the common council and ultimately an approval by the joint review board.
Questions or comments from the council? Alderman Toman.
What, what is the rationale?
Oh, we're not, not including MMSD, it's going up to MMSD, but, but we, but we do include Bender Park and the thinking there, if there are project costs that are eligible that we could partner with Milwaukee County on to improve, uh, that park, uh, using TIF dollars, recognizing that they, as one of the taxing jurisdictions, are foregoing their share of the revenue during that TID period as well, and that would create a, a better product for the, the citizens of Oak Creek, the visitors to the, both parks, whether it be Lake Vista or Bender, I mean, people are gonna see it as one park. And if we can provide a better experience with the, with costs that are eligible, the district, for instance, trail extensions or what have you, I mean, those are types of things we'd like to explore as part of the project plan.
And obviously, we would drive planned spending and.
Yes.
Planned cooperation in Bender Parks, it wouldn't be county-driven.
Absolutely. It's not.
Anything on this side? No, if no other questions or comments, a motion on eight.
Guzekowski, second.
I think I heard Guzy seconds, uh, roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kurkowski.
Hi.
Bukavich.
Hi.
Verhalen.
No.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
All right, moving on to nine, which is a consideration of resolution number 11767-111516, pledging funding for local share of 2016, 2020 transportation alternatives program grant for an extension to the Oak Leaf Trail and directing staff to work with Milwaukee County to provide for necessary easements in the third and fourth districts.
Uh, thank, thank you, and I think it's actually an excellent point, Alderman Toman, uh, that you brought up earlier, and this really kind of goes towards that point. I mean, the ultimate goal obviously is to provide the, the, the best, the most value to our residents and to the provision, provision of a, a, a good, a great park system. And as part of that, I mean, the county has traditionally had some, some strength in the terms of they have been able to engineer and design certain features such as trails, they've got a, a great track record in terms of writing grants, what they don't have a great track record of is funding their projects. And, uh, here was an instance where staff was able to work with the county to apply for a, a substantial grant that would cover 80% of, of the cost of making this connection between Bender and Lake Vista and Abenshine Park and ultimately the, the connection to the, the countywide Oak Leaf Trail system, uh, a, a huge segment off, off-road and would only cost local share of 20%. Um, in the spirit of cooperation, we ask that they take the lead, the, the county, and that grant application and the kind of grant coordination, and we offered to potentially fund the 20% local match. Now, as the math turns out, there, you'll see that there's actually a, a county commitment of, of other dollars to that as well, so there's, there's a commitment, a financial commitment on, on both parties, uh, a minimal commitment, which, uh, would result in the creation of a, a vital link in the trail system that again would create, create that linkage between Bender Park, uh, the rest of the Oak Leaf Trail system, Milwaukee County Trail system, Abenshine Park, and also ultimately connecting both trail systems to an extensive trail system in, in Racine County. And I, I think that the fact that this did score so highly on the, the TAP grant, uh, scoring system is truly a, a validation of the importance of this trail segment and how the, how the state, uh, values this as a transportation alternative. So we're, we're happy that we're able to be in a position to, uh, through the use of our bike impact fees and escrows, uh, to a certain extent, to cover that local cost. We think it'll provide for a, a great asset for the residents of Oak Creek and Milwaukee County at a minimal cost.
And I know that a lot of the residents have asked for this extension, uh, these connections and I, and I, I like the fact a lot of it's off-road, which provides safety, um, versus having it on the main, main street, so I think it's a, it's a win for, for Oak Creek and for the county. Questions?
Mayor, I think I just wanna ask, just point out that, you know, somebody could probably look at this and say, well, we could spend $320,000 somewhere else considering budget issues, but it's my understanding, Bridget, that the, the money that this is coming from, it isn't just money you can spend anywhere, correct? I mean, you're pretty restricted on where you can spend this money and we're putting it to, to great use by, by this trail.
Correct, so we have, um, historically held a bike escrow account, um, which is unique in that it can only be used for maintenance and, and additional items and specifically related to the trails. So we will be utilizing what we have remaining of the bike escrow account and then we will be using park impact fees for the remainder of that 320, so very specific.
Alderman Gale.
It's, Mayor, I just wanna make the comment, I, I think, you know, over and above kind of the, the pathing, this is a, a, a great example of our, our government here working with the county and as an important partner in our project, we're gonna need them to really help activate the Bender Park, our Lake Vista project, and we're also obviously had great, great assistance with them on the project over, uh, the, on and near the IKEA property. So the extent that we can cement this relationship and continue to kind of foster cooperation, it, uh, serves us, I think, very well moving forward, considering back to 13th Street is a county road, you know, can't hurt to, uh, have a cooperative agreement here and work in tandem, uh, to really get a, a good project moving forward.
Common theme tonight, working cooperative, cooperatively with other government agencies. Arden. Thanks, Gary. Welcome, sir.
Arden Deggner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I am confused because as this project map shows and we were told that they required an underpass when Highway 100 was rebuilt for the bike riders. Oh yes, yes, even lights would not prevent witches from, oh, that dark hole. Now, all at once here, we have another proposal, completely ignoring this former bike route. And we all know that these all end up in Racine County. Why hasn't the existing bike route, uh, have usage? And this new one, particularly with that underpass over the, under the, as I understand, it's still there, but maybe it's full of dirt by now, although I have to stop and, and on Pennsylvania Avenue and, uh, uh, for these, uh, crossings.
Not that I wanna jump into this, but are you, are you arguing that the current bike trails are not being used?
I'm not, not exactly. We have invested a lot of money in the past in the current bike trails, including connections to, uh, we put a connection here maybe 10 years ago to some development, uh, and I'm not sure if it was the high school or what, because it does show, uh, a map go, a, a string going up to Drexel Avenue, uh, north of that along the, along the railroad right of way, and I'm confused. Here we have another route, actually within the 10-mile zone they're talking about, and yet we're not, are we just gonna waste our money now or have we wasted it in the past?
Oh, you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, I think if, if I can kind of paraphrase. A portion of this route parallels the existing North Shore Bike Trail, albeit about, uh, about a half mile to the, to the west of that. And originally, in our discussions with Milwaukee County, one of the alternative routes for this was to take this and connect it up at the Oak Creek Middle School, which would have, again, utilized more of that North Shore right-of-way. Uh, as it turns out, that would have actually had, had been a more expensive, uh, proposition given the environmental factors that they would have had to deal with, it was cheaper to utilize, is that, essentially this is utilizing the energies right-of-way, which is, creates great advantages with respect to not having to cross lots of environmental lands, minimizes costs. So you're right that there's, there's some parallel there, but it's, uh, it is actually a more cost-effective means of making that linkage than connecting up with the existing North Shore trail.
Because then how are you gonna use that, that underpass we have under Highway 100 with the existing, how, how's that gonna be used?
It's still gonna be used like it's used today and it is used considerably.
Because will there be an underpass then?
That doesn't cross Highway 100.
Uh, on this new one?
No.
I wouldn't think so.
It doesn't cross Highway 100.
Well, that, that's, that's why I'm, I'm wondering which is the safest route?
Can't answer that question. I think they're all safe. Anyone else? Thanks for the question, Arden. Motion on, uh, nine.
Verhalen, second. Just, just for one, one comment.
All right, I had Verhalen second, then we'll go to Doug and then we'll have a roll call.
Okay, thanks, and just for the, the, for total transparency, part of the motion also includes that staff will work with the, the counties to secure easements across our rights-of-way. And I know that that's been the subject of some discussion lately, but I mean, that, that is, I didn't want that to be hidden in any of that motion, this would allow direct staff to work with the county to provide them with easements where that bike trail crosses our rights-of-way. It is.
So we have a second, uh, roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Hi.
Bukavich.
Hi.
Verhalen.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Moving on, item 10 is consideration of ordinance number 2831, it would amend section two of ordinance number 2788, fixing the salary ranges, salary, wages and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2016. We'd also add an additional position for a destination marketing specialist as recommended by the personnel committee. Doug?
Sir, uh, at their last meeting, the council adopted a resolution designated in the tourism commission as the tourism entity for the city of Oak Creek and approving the action plan for the use of hotel room tax revenue. A part of that action plan was, uh, to allow the tourism commission to establish a budget and employ destination marketing staff for tourism promotion and development. This destination marketing specialist, which would be an employee of the city, uh, would, uh, provide as, that, uh, that staff for the tourism commission, they'd provide the liaison between the tourism commission and the city. Um, it's always been in the plan for that, it's been discussed with the councils, it's been discussed with the CDA. Uh, again, and I'll reiterate this, this position is being funded solely out of room tax dollars, those room tax dollars must be spent on tourism promotion and development, cannot be spent for general fund, other than that, which is allowed by statute.
This additional position does not impact, has no fiscal impact to us, other than the money that's obtained by hotel taxes.
Do you wanna give a ballpark for what room tax revenue is, uh, how much it's actually coming in?
Uh, the, the room tax revenue that will be directed to the tourism commission in 2016 will be approximately $350,000 and that will go up slightly over the next four years as we phase in reductions in the amount that the city is allowed to retain.
Questions or comments? Motion. Come on up, Mr. Deggner.
Arden Deggner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Now, this is a, is a, is, is a really interesting situation because this $50,000 that, that's listed does not cover any of the benefits. It used to be the benefits were at least 25%, 30%. Now, we all know that if you drain off this money, and the last I heard was probably $300,000.
Hold on one second, Doug, does this cover?
The $50,000 is the salary portion, the authorization includes money for fringes that would take it to about $70,000.
Okay, so it's 50 plus.
20%, then.
Okay.
Well.
All-encompassing, out of the tourism dollars.
Out of those dollars.
The, the, but the point is that that will be removed from the tourism dollars, which I thought was maybe in the neighborhood of a couple of hundred, 300. Now, however, once we hire this person, can they be let go if the money is changed, if the, if the state, uh, changes these rules? Not only that, but you and I both know that we have people on this council that in 10 minutes a day could be in charge of this whole thing. We have people that are able to do this and we've got computerized programs that would allow anything.
I guess I would disagree with that assessment, uh, but.
I'd like to hear who that council member is, personally.
No, don't mention who that is.
Not, not to belittle your skills as council members.
But, but, so I have, I, I have complete question, the need for a permanent part employee, I would say a one-tenth part-time employee could handle this, couple hundred-thousand-dollar expenditures, why, that's nothing, and just call up the Packers, call up their, they'll be at your door with, with the money in hand. What I suggested, uh, many months ago was that this should go to all this money we're spending on, on, uh, Lake Vista Park. If there is anything that's, that is part of tourism, it's Lake Vista, in the same way with a community center. If there's anything a part of people visiting our city, it's the community center, but oh, no, 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 we've gotta have a permanent part-time, I'm, I'm against this.
Thank you, Arden. Anything, um, to his point on Lake Vista, is there any opportunity in the future to tie any of that, uh?
If, if the tourism commission, who's in charge of that budget, can make the logical connection between what happens at Lake Vista and the promotion of hotel motel room tax, room, room nights, that is certainly an eligible expense.
Like if there was a hotel convention center on the lakefront?
Exactly.
Right.
Does old, like, money in that can be spent on?
Has to be spent on tourism promotion and development. We could not, for example, just spend it on, for example, our bike trails, saying that, there's gotta be a nexus between that expenditure and actual tourism promotion.
There's also though, an option for actual, a building of.
Uh, actual building of convention center, correct.
Any other questions on this one? Motion on 10.
Gale, a move to approve ordinance number 2831 amending section two of ordinance 2788, fixing the salary ranges, salary, wages and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2016, adding an additional position where we desti, destination marketing specialist as recommended by the personnel committee.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Hi.
Verhalen.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kurkowski.
Hi.
I am 11's informational, it's my intent to, at the next meeting, have a formal motion to appoint Alderman Gale to the tourism commission, depending his acceptance. He's nodding affirmative, so that's just an informational. Um, 12 is a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments as follows, I'm not gonna read them all, they're as listed, any questions? Any questions or comments on any of those?
Just a question.
Yep.
Do you have to be a resident to be on an Oak Creek Board or Commission?
Barry. This one, I, I noticed when I was going through, typing up the description, I mean, Melissa, I may be overstepping, but we didn't, it doesn't state that they need to be resident of the city of Oak Creek.
Although the one, if you're referring to Mr. Willis, by statute, one of the members, by statute of your Tourism Commission has to represent the Oak Creek or the local hospitality, hotel motel industry. And if there was a person that was in a management capacity with the, those hotels, that would, could serve in that capacity, you could have that, does not have to be a resident of the city.
Okay, but on any other board, commission, typically we want them to be residents of the city.
I would think that you, you should probably want that. I'm not sure if that's an absolute requirement, though.
I, I just never, that's what triggered the question, but Doug answered it. So we could have people from other communities sitting on our board.
And for instance, I mean...
I don't think we do, but...
But we could.
For instance, this individual is the regional director for the entity that can, that owns three of the top, highest grossing room tax revenue generators in the city.
This is a rather specific...
Yes.
Yeah, that's a specific requirement.
So do you have any understanding that someone else on a board or commission doesn't live in the city?
No, but I have been asked by residents that recently moved out.
Oh, okay.
So, I didn't have an answer for them.
Yeah, in my tenure, I've always appointed residents.
I would think that you're going to do the good of Oak Creek, you want to.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way I...
I didn't know what the rule was, and the person moved and wanted to know if they could serve.
Good question, though. If no other questions, I need a motion on 12.
Gil, move to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed. Guzekowski, second.
I think I heard Guzekowski first. It's really close, though. Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Item 13 is a consideration of motion to approve the 2017 regular combined common council meeting dates. There's one correction. It should be, see if I remember this, it should be April 3rd and not April 4th, is that correct? Yes.
Forty-third.
Forty-third.
April 3rd, not the 4th, not the 43rd. That was the rare, very rare leap, April.
Very rare, never seen before.
So if no other questions or comments on that, motion on 13.
Gil, move to approve the 2017 regular combined common council meeting dates.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Engineering. Item 15 is a consideration of resolution number 11768-111516, adopting the equivalent charge of $33 for the stormwater management services charges.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the, the charge for equivalent runoff units that goes to each individual residential home and then to commercial and business development based on impervious area. It has to do with runoff and the revenue needed to satisfy our stormwater permit. The fee has been at $29 per ERU for three years. Discussion in the budget proceedings have brought the recommendation that it be increased $4 to $33 per ERU. And stormwater staff has submitted a memo detailing the, the need for the increase. Basically, all the development that's been happening, there is a significant increase in maintenance, and pointed out the aging equipment, street sweepers in particular being a need as part of the justification for this increase.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Yeah, just one question. Just wanted to know how we compare with the surrounding communities as far as the stormwater charge?
In the...
Are we about in ballpark, or are we low, still lower, or?
We're, we're very low. So in the, your budget packet, in the blue pieces of paper, was where the stormwater was found, and there were, was a really, a set of bigger pieces of paper, in that, that had all of the Wisconsin community, all Wisconsin communities. The highest was $115, the lowest was 110, and so we're going to 33. So we're still very much on the low end.
Now, because I, I would imagine, just, just a little follow-up, I would imagine that some of us might get some residents that'll gripe about it, but I mean, it's just more of a FYI thing, I guess.
So, not looking at that sheet of paper, and the public doesn't have the benefit of looking at that here, you had 10 to 100 and something? What would the median be if you knew?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Yeah.
Would it be safe to say it's higher than $33?
Yes.
Yeah, 33 is way in the low end.
Are, just a, gentle, are we hampering ourselves by keeping this low?
Well, in your budget proposal, with the stormwater long-range analysis, we're looking at another $4 increase for 2018, to also continue to have the capital to purchase that second street sweeper.
Got it, okay.
Bridget, may I remind everyone what those street sweepers are going to cost a piece? There's two of them.
$150,000 each.
How much?
$250 each.
Okay.
Arden Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. How much is the $29 generating now? How much?
$738,000.
$738,000.
incremental $97,000, just $4, Mike? It's not listed though.
13, 13%.
The, the point that, that we poor suckers are being stuck with is a, an added tax, just like the big city of Milwaukee. And is this a real tax? No! Just, just consider anyone wanting to move into Milwaukee County, all these extra fees, including this, because just take a look at this list. Why should the poor suckers that are living in this city have to pay for these capital development projects that are all funded by TIF districts? And, and they have stormwater detention bonds? Why is the city, poor suckers, stuck? We're going to be stuck, same way with Pennsylvania Avenue with this 600. Don't you have any consideration? The fact that we cannot afford this, the poor suckers that are living in this city? We can't afford it! There are different ways of doing it. For instance, I was telling the, the street manager here a couple weeks ago, this property, 25 feet long, in front of my property on Pennsylvania Avenue, was cracked over, and the Alderman knows it, about five years ago, they put a little, tried to cover it up with, with some tar. Now it is cracked, in addition to that, a larger crack extending to it. This is the kind of maintenance that we need! And these other items have to be paid for by these people that are getting, making big money off TIF districts! We cannot afford this kind of stuff! Can't you understand? That's a fee! People are going to have to move out of this county and city, just as the former, I was requested that that is where I should go!
Thanks for your comments. Any other questions on 15? Bridget?
Just for the record, all new development are also a part of this increase, and we calculate the ERUs with the engineering department, and that's for new development as well. So all businesses, including the ones that are in the TIF district, are a part of this and a part of that revenue that comes into the stormwater fund. And as Mike has in his memo, talking about that additional development and these sweepers, that also goes towards your annual report and remaining in compliance for the stormwater management with the state and DNR.
And I don't think, I shouldn't say any, everybody should say this, but I, I don't think you can argue the success of the stormwater management program. It speaks for itself. Any other questions or comments? Motion?
Gil, move to approve resolution 11768-111516, adopting the equivalent charge of $33 for the stormwater management services charge, charges.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 16 is a consideration of motion to authorize the purchase of a hydrocedar from LF George in amount of, in the amount of $30,750.
Thanks, Mayor. This is kind of a combined engineering, I guess, engineering slash stormwater slash street department item. I can kind of outline it for you, and Ted is available here to speak on the, on the item as well. But basically, all the construction that, that, that we've got going on, including engineering-driven projects, stormwater-driven projects, and the assistance that the street department helps on these, basically constructing them either in, in whole or in part, had us thinking about what might be an alternate or a better way to restore these, the, the, the projects to grass cover at, at project completion. So on, on the recent Storm, Forest Hill Stormwater Project that, that the street department completed, they employed the use of, of a hydrocedar, a demo unit, and they were fairly impressed with the, the cost savings and in particular, the, the man-hours needed to restore the project. And if anybody's been by that project, you'll see that, that the grass has filled in nicely. But then considering that performance, all the other needs and potential uses, streets went out and solicited some proposals for hydrocedars and, and the units, and the costs are presented in the table on the report. So, Ted, if you want to speak to that at all?
You're good.
Yeah, sure. Actually, this, we were approached actually by engineering quite some time ago to even look at some of the hydrocedars. We've paid considerable amount of money for restoration of some of the areas in construction, and had to go back and do some work. If you look at, it's about a third of the time is what it takes us to do matting and, and seed, and we can also use this. One of the things that we thought would be very useful for this is, we could actually team up with the engineering department on some of our road programs and do away with possibly some of the landscaping costs for the projects, which would extend some of our, our dollars, so we could get a kind of more bang for our buck on the, on the road programs.
Was the project that Mike referred to, is that the first time we had tried to use one of these hydrocedars?
It's not the first time I have used one.
No, here, though, here.
It's the first time I've used one with the city of Oak Creek, yes.
Okay. Questions?
I, I have one question, Ted. How many hours do you think we'll be able to utilize this thing per year? Just a wild guess. I know it depends on how many projects you got going on, but I would say, just give me a figure, kind of on average, what you expect to use it.
Well, I would say, we run our ditching crew probably five months to six months out of the year. A third of their time is, is basically doing restoration work. That would cut that time by, you know, we would save two-thirds of that time we would have available to us. So in man-hours, I'd have to do the math on it, but, I mean, that's just the street department's use for ditching and culvert work. We also do a number of projects in conjunction with the, with the engineering department.
Parks as well, I would imagine.
And parks. So I would say that we would probably be using this thing not only to do restoration work and that, but also it would serve as, basically as a mobile 750-gallon water tank to go through and, and do watering for the tree projects, the boulevards, and a number of other things that currently we use smaller tanks or, or that one big, older truck that's maybe not the easiest to get around.
Well, it's nice to know that you're going to try to use it for double and triple duty anyway.
Absolutely.
I know if these things sit around because of the fertilizers and stuff you use in them, they're pretty high maintenance and the shelf life isn't very long. It's kind of like a solder on a truck, they only last five or six years, and boy, they tore right up. So it's good to see that you're going to utilize it to 200% of its actual, actual design stuff.
And we will definitely take care of it. Our salt, our salt trucks last considerably longer than five or six years. We've got some that are 15 and 16 years old.
That's because of the maintenance the upkeep is doing.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well, Ted, to the extent you can keep any state or county people from putting any more matting down on our streets, the better off it will be.
That was kind of a nightmare, yeah.
Well, Mike?
Yeah, we just add that, just done that, that Soil Hall project that we had, bringing that soil to, to Peter Cooper site, seeding that stockpile soil on, on Lakefront site, and then the seeding that you've seen taking place on the site over here, to the west of the library, that grass has come up, that was hydroseeded, but we paid a contractor to do that. Those two sites were $15,000 worth of, of, you know, cost expended to get those two sites seeded. So if we can get the, the street department, if they've got availability, we can get them to handle some projects along that line, this really could pay for itself fairly quickly.
Sounds good. Any questions? All right, motion?
Gil, move to authorize the purchase of a hydrocedar from LF George in the amount of $30,750.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 18 is a consideration of motion to convene in the closed session immediately following the conclusion of the common council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851E to discuss an addendum to the November 30, 2012, letter of intent to supply wholesale water to the city of Waukesha through its water utility. Alderman Gale?
Gil, move to convene in the closed session immediately following the conclusion of the common council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 Sub-1, to be discussed an addendum to the November 30, 2012, letter of intent to supply wholesale water to the city of Waukesha through its water utility.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
We will go into closed session, we'll turn the livestream off, we'll turn it back on when we come back into, into open session.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
All right, item 20 is a consideration of resolution number 11765-111516, authorizing utility to execute an addendum to the letter of intent to supply wholesale water to the city of Waukesha through its water utility. Any questions, comments, motion?
Gil, move to approve resolution 11765-111516, authorizing the utility to execute an addendum to the letter of intent to supply wholesale water to the city of Waukesha through its water utility.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, excuse me, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.